Annual financial report and audit. And I'm going to invite Don Warren to come up and get us started.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm very pleased to have Bill and Casey here from CLA to present the audit to you. They'll go through a slide presentation and then we'll take questions and go from there. Turn it over to Bill.
Right. Very good. And we have Commissioners Amanda Edwards and Jasmine Beach Farrar are on the phone. They could not be here for this, at this time for the specially called meeting, but they're watching and listening on the phone, so. So folks know.
Okay. Thank you, Don. We put together a PowerPoint slideshow that we'll go through and we'll highlight our presentation, as Don said, and then at the end we will take any questions or if you have questions throughout, please stop me and I will answer any questions that you may have. First, I'd like to thank Don and his staff. Don, they had quite a challenge of putting together the financial statements and as you're aware, they are being issued very late compared to in prior years due to some extenuating circumstances that the county is dead to deal with regarding the prior administration and in addition with the system implementation they went through. So with that said, we'll move on to the presentation. If the clicker would go here.
It flummoxes many, many of us, so.
It is turned on, I will tell you that. I tell you what, you just need batteries?
Just say next slide and I'll get this for eight seconds.
I was gonna say, if you just need batteries, I got batteries right here. I have the same clicker. So. I knew being a Boy Scout at one point would come in handy.
Apologies, Board.
Not a problem.
There we go. All right. Nothing, little battery couldn't work. So we're going to walk through the scope and responsibilities in the financial statement audit, require communications, audit findings, the single audit findings, GASB kind of emerging issues that you should be aware of, that we went over with finance, and then we'll move through with any questions. We did do an audit of the June 30th, 2018 financial statements. That is what we were engaged to do, as well as a single audit, which is the audit of the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and a certification of the data collection form. We issued our reports on internal controls in conjunction with our audit reports, and we issued our report on the major federal programs under a single audit and the major state programs under a single audit, which we're going to cover today. And then we also issued a letter to those charged with governance, which is yourselves, that highlighted the responsibilities we are to communicate with you, which is what I'm here to do today. So in addition to the presentation, you also have a letter that has been issued to your attention. I'll back up one slide. We did our audit in four phases. The planning and strategy phase is done close to year end, and actually a little bit we call it interim fieldwork, which we do during our planning phases, and that evolves as the audit goes on, especially in this case, it continued to evolve as new issues were noted and uncovered that we had to consider for our audit. Phase two was the system evaluation, where we evaluate internal control structures and go through that process, as well as IT structures. Phase three then is our testing and our analysis, and then phase four is where we're at now. We issued our reports and we're in the follow-up and presentation phase. Audits require communication. We've audited in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. The purpose of an audit is to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatements, assess accounting principles used in significant estimates made by management, and to evaluate the overall presentation of the financial statements. In this, the county's aspect, that means they're all in accordance with what's known as the GASBs. Governmental Accounting Standards Board issues the guidance you're to follow for accounting practices, in addition to the generally accepted accounting principles. We did issue our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion was an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, so we did a lot of work to go through a lot of the fraud risk procedures that we had to go through to get there, but we were able to issue a unmodified opinion. We did have a two emphasis matter paragraphs within our financial statement report. One is for the implementation of GASB 75, which was for the recording of your other post-employment benefits. The other post-employment benefits, similar to the pension, it used to be where you only reported a piece that you did not pay for during the year. Now the entire liability is showing up on your financial statements. So anything you've promised to pay to current employees as they retire is basically, is projected and that amount is booked onto your financial statements currently. That piece was $125.5 million restatement for you all for this year. Every government had to implement that this year. That's part of the GASB 75 implementation, so everybody is going through that. The amounts differ from county to county depending upon what your OPEB plan currently funds for retirees. In addition, we did have a correction of error emphasis matter. There was an issue noted, the construction in progress with the way some amounts were closed out in the past, so that was corrected this year as a prior period adjustment. It was above our materiality, so anytime it's above our materiality threshold, we actually do go back and restate the opening balances. These are detailed in Note 10 of what's called the CAFR, the Comparative Annual Financial Report, that you all have a copy of. Significant accounting policies are described in Note 1 of the financial statements. We evaluated those significant accounting policies, made sure that they were in accordance with industry standards and that they seemed reasonable based on the circumstances. And again, the major change this year for in accounting principles was that implementation of GASB 75 for OPEB liability, which had that beginning amount of $125 million. Significant disclosures, I always bring that to the attention of governance. I know the CAFR document is very large, 200 and some pages. It is a lot to read. A couple areas you'll want to highlight is the management's discussion analysis in the beginning, and then here we've highlighted some significant disclosures that you would want to look at, mainly the debt, OPEB, and pension, because those are long-term liabilities that how you budget for now will be impacted in the future. So those are things to consider as you're doing your budgets and projecting your long-term financial planning. Also, the net position of fund balance notes, obviously you always need to know those, what's restricted, committed, what do you have available to spend and budget for. When we evaluated the significant management's judgments and estimates, there is what we wanted to bring to your attention, where we focused on, allowance for uncollectibles, the use of useful lives of capital assets, liability for OPEB and pension, incurred but not reported as your self-insurance amounts and where you estimate what has been incurred but has actually not been reported that you may owe for in the next fiscal year. Fair value of estimates, while they are based on current market pricing, they actually is, that is an estimate in general, and again, it can change on day-to-day basis, so we do consider that estimate. And then the landfill closure, post-closure cost, you use an engineering firm that actually helps project that, helps management project what that liability is for their financial statements. So we obtained that report and reviewed the underlying information in that to make sure it was reasonable. We did have some corrective misstatements this year. Again, the way this document works is our audit opinions are the only thing we actually are responsible for and own. Everything else is the responsibility of management in the financial statements, so management is responsible for preparing them, they review them, then we audit them. After we get done, when we get done our audit procedures, as we're going through it, if we find something that needs to be adjusted, we bring that to management's attention as a proposed adjusting journal entry. Management then has the responsibility of accepting that proposed adjustment and then booking it through the financial statements. This year, we had a few areas that we noted, we had post-adjustments for. They were the landfill post-closures, accounts receivable, due to other governments, long-term liabilities, and when they were implementing OPEB, we had some adjustments to those numbers that we provided them. Then we have what's known as uncorrected misstatements. These were things that fell below our materiality threshold that we did not feel needed to be corrected and that they would not, if they were not made, would not make the financial statements misleading. We bring those to the attention of management. They then have to agree that, yes, we agree this does not make our financial statements misleading by not including this information. Essentially, a lot of these things are timing things or they're estimates where we may have a differing opinion on the estimated number than they do, or they're for invoices that came in after year-end that they didn't go back and accrue for. So it's the timing and estimates that long-range would work out. They just, we didn't make them go back and adjust that year-end balance numbers for these. And they were compensated absent accruals, your pension is spiking accrual, accounts payable, payroll accruals, some cash to accrual conversions, the landfill post-closures, and proceeds from the sale of capital assets, which was a very small amount. So these were, again, they were not material to financial statements and they will be made in future years or adjusted up to actual. We had no disagreements with management. Management was very cooperative and professional during the audit process. We were told by management in our representation letter, they did not consult with any other accountants for the application of any generally accepted accounting principles or governmental accounting standards, and there was no major issues discussed with us prior to us being brought in as the auditors. The county went through an RFP process, which we were selected at that time to conduct the audit, which was then, the contract was then brought to you all for approval. I will say that in our letter, you will see that we did list out that there were some difficulties with the audit. Those difficulties related to additional procedures we had to perform related to the fraud risk that we identified or that were even presented to us after we took over the engagement and going through, and as the fall went on and the indictments were rolled out, there was additional procedures that affected our audit, which we had to do significant amount of work on. In addition, there was a new system implementation that took us and management a significant amount of time required to actually get the financial statements prepared, and that is why you're getting them now. Plus, in addition to that, there was a significant amount of turnover in the finance department, so therefore the finance department took some time and had to go, really go through the numbers and when they're merging through things together. Audit findings, we issued our report on internal control over financial reporting compliance and other matters, based on our government auditing standards. This is also known as our Yellow Book Report. We had six material weaknesses that we identified, nine significant deficiencies, and one instance of non-compliance. The difference between the two, I put the formal definitions in the presentation. Basically, what I can say is that a material weakness is a internal control issue that we noted that caused either a material adjustment to be made to the financial statements or that we think could cause a material adjustment to be made to the financial statements or could have impacted them in a material amount, which we set materiality. So when we look at it, this is what, these are material weaknesses. If it doesn't reach that threshold of materiality and the chances are remote that it may happen and not get detected, then it falls into the definition of a significant deficiency. Material weaknesses, the areas we noted this year was the preparation of the schedule of federal and state awards. That was also an issue of non-compliance. There were some changes made by the state auditor's office this year and how the direct payments were to get recorded on the schedule of federal awards and state awards. That communication was made to previous members that are no longer with the county, so therefore it didn't get updated into the schedule. So when we got the schedule, we had to require some revisions be made to it before it would be completed. We had a review of the OPEB entries. We noted some changes there that were made, approval of wire transfers, recording of liabilities for the stormwater surety bonds, recording of receivables for insurance policies, and recording of construction in progress. So those were our six areas of material weaknesses that we noted. Those are detailed in the compliance section of the financial statements that you have. Significant deficiencies, we noted these, review and approval of management time cards, authorization procurement cards, or also known as P-card limit increases, reconciliation review of automatic revenue batch postings, review and approval of general dispersments, accrual of year-end invoices, review of year-end payroll, complimentary user controls to the EMS billings, whenever you use a third party, there's complimentary controls that the county should be implementing, the manual check maintenance and writing process at the sheriff's office, and approval of expense reimbursement for department directors. Again, these are also in the back of that compliance section of your financial statement in detail, and management has prepared corrective action plans for each of these, which has also been submitted in the back of your document. We also issued a management letter, which basically, these are issues that we think we still should bring to your attention, that warrant your attention and management's attention and could be improved for best practices in the future. Sales tax receivable and the timely submission of those to the state, dispersment reconciliations, accounting functions performed outside the general ledger with the system implementation this year. The financial statements needed to be mapped outside of that system, so again, that is a risk and the best practice is to have it all within one system to prevent errors or mistakes from being made. Board oversight, we also recommend some detailed board oversight and then issues around contracts, about maintaining contract lists all in one department, were some of the areas we've noted. These are all detailed in our management letter, which was also issued to you all. The single audit results, here's our major federal programs that we tested, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program, known as the SNAP Cluster, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, called the TANF Cluster, Social Services Block Grant, and the Medicaid Cluster. In addition, we had the major state programs that were tested this year, where the public school capital funding lottery proceeds, the JCPC programs, and the state foster care benefits programs. We issued our reports on each major federal programs in accordance with the federal guidance and each major state program in accordance with the federal guidance and the State Single Audit Implementation Act. We noted findings in these areas as well, mainly the one was by March 31st, you're required to submit to the federal government the single audit report. Obviously, with the delay in the financial statements this year, that was not, you could not do that, therefore that's automatically a finding because you are not in agreement with what's called the Uniform Guidance Circular, so therefore that was reported, and that is also an instance of non-compliance because you're required to comply with that federal law, so. Two significant deficiencies were noted over the state programs. The one was also the filing of the reports with the federal government because the state brings in their same requirements, and then in addition, there were some final construction reports in the public school capital funding program that were submitted late to the, as required by the program, so. Those are all detailed also in the back of your compliance section of your report. A few things, just that we brought up the finance to keep them up to date, new GASBs, this is listing as you can see. It used to be there would be one a year, maybe one every few years. Now, you know, just in this year, there was several that had to go in place, mainly that OPEB 1 GASB 75 was for this year. The one that really is going to impact you all down the road is going to be in 2021 with the lease implementation. So we are going to communicate with finance whenever we do, anytime you go to training, and Don's going to be obtaining GFOA training this month. That'd be a topic there, it'd be a topic we're doing a lot of our presentations is, how do you implement that? Because it is going to be a large undertaking to implement that GASB. Again, just gathering all the leases that the county may have and looking at them and determining how they need to be reported. Evaluating insider threats, this is just something we just keep everybody aware of, especially with cybersecurity nowadays. It is, you know, you see more and more governments, people think governments aren't prone to ransom attacks, but I can tell you, if you turn on the news, as you guys see there, in the headlines all the time. So in the interest of protecting the county, we kind of throw that there to make sure that you guys are providing the support you need, whether it's within finance or IT, to make sure that all of your security risks are identified and are being evaluated on a continual basis. We also bring up crowdfunding. This is something we're seeing growing more and more, I don't know, we talked this morning at the audit committee, not sure that it's really impacting the county as much, it's more, we see it more at school district levels, but as GoFundMe pages are popping up, if any county employee is setting up GoFundMe pages to basically fund a project that was not in the budget, you know, that's something that you all would want to have a policy set around and work with your legal staff to make sure that you're addressing any of We do have some upcoming modifications to the single audit this year. The federal government was shut down for a while, so those have been delayed. It's now May, they should have been rolled out by now, but there will impact how we submit the data collection and then audit findings, and actually, some of the compliance supplement is in process of changing. That will be more of an impact on auditors, but it could have an impact that you would see different kind of testing being done based on some of the programs. That is the high-level presentation. I will answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Are there any initial questions from any members of the commission? Al or Robert, I'm curious, you guys serve on our audit committee, are there any observations or comments you guys would like to share with us, just sort of from the audit committee perspective on the process or?
The process was long-going and long overdue.
It's long overdue, and I know that y'all put a lot of work into it, and a lot more hours than what we thought, what, 2,700 hours?
Yeah, the original, our original bid when we first submitted was for 885, and we ended up well over 2,700 hours with all the additional risk we had to address that came up during the year as a result of the issues you guys have had this past years.
And one reason for that is because of the problems we've had in the past. They did a good job of really diving in. Normally, on the tests, they would do a percentage, but I think on most tests, correct me if I'm wrong, you went 100%, you know, into it.
Not all of them, but we did on, we did on some, and in addition, what we really did is we lowered our materiality in a lot of areas, so that increased our sample size. If you think about, you know, if we normally would test an account balance, all transactions, you know, above 100,000, if we lowered that down to 50,000, that picked up a tremendous amount more transactions that we had to test. And we went into some areas that may not be material to the financial statement, but they brought to our attention either through interviewing of county employees, interviewing of some of you all, or through reading indictments that we knew were areas of risk and that we had to address, such as P-cards. P-cards are immaterially, the individual balances going through there typically may not be, even if you add them up, may not be that large, but we knew there was issues there, so we had to do testing around those. And that's just one example of where we expanded our testing into different areas this year.
And in spite of what's going on, I think what's, we can't lose track of is, in some ways during this audit, Ronnie was a perfect storm. We had a new financial director, we had four or five people to leave in the department, and we have a new audit, and this is their first audit in North Carolina for government. So, you know, when you look at that, even though we are late, but the thorough audit that we have and the opinion, I think we're fortunate considering what everybody had to work through. And I want to commend you, but most of all our staff, because of what they went through to get us through this process. And we'll see a lot of benefit, I'm sure, from the audit this year because in making the corrections and all and what they're doing, we're already, you might as well say, in close to the end of this year, they'll be starting in what, a few months, the audit for the end of this year. So I think when you look at where we've come from and what's been accomplished, we've done great. And what makes me feel a lot, you know, better too, some were calling for forensic audit before, but when you look at what we've gone through, plus what the feds are doing with theirs, we know where we are in Buncombe County, I think, at this point, so.
And I'll add to that too, so our audit doesn't just touch finance, especially the single audit, and I would say that Health and Human Services and all that, they did a great job of really providing information timely, every department did, but to your point, when you say there was just turnover in finance, there was turnover in a lot of the other departments too that we normally work with, IT, HR, those are all departments we work with on a normal basis throughout the audit. So even preparing the schedule of federal awards, in the past, the management had outsourced that sort of to the other, the old accounting firm, which is not really the best practice, it's supposed to be done internally, so, you know, them just to prepare that was even a challenge. So I commend the staff of what they've gone through. It was a very grueling process. Don and I have spoken, and it's probably the longest and most detailed audit, I think, I've had to go through, just the additional procedures. It just, to your point, was a perfect storm of everything kind of falling, and just when you thought you were done, something else came out or something else happened, and they got through it, so I commend them for getting through it. It was a very long and grueling challenge for them, and we had several phone calls throughout the process with the audit committee to keep them up to date with the county managers, as, and again, even there was turning over, right? So we came, we met with one county manager, then another county manager, until we finally met with the Ness County manager. So typically, you wouldn't see that in an audit. We would meet with the county manager once, you know, go through the fraud interview and keep them up to date of the audit, but that would be it. We wouldn't kind of meet with two or three to go through all the process like we had to do. So a lot of just additional work for us and for the finance and all those involved in the audit this year.
So I have a question. In terms of, in terms of some of the findings that you have, in terms of areas that you describe as material weaknesses, and I know that, I mean, I know you don't want to, you just, well, let me just ask a question. How come, how come some of those issues were not identified in previous outside audits? Is it that they were just, you know, frankly, they were just missed, or your group had a different maybe view than others, or is it the nature of that? Some of those issues were identified as issues through the investigations of staff where there was identified criminal activity that they would have never been naturally looked at in a typical outside audit, but were focused on because they were already identified as issues as a result of the investigation?
Right. So it is actually, I'd say it's a combination of those answers. You kind of answered the question as you were going through it. So some of them were, we look at the period of time, some of them were just mistakes that were made during this period. So, you know, they just evolved into a material weakness. Others were issues that were brought up through the indictment, which we then went and dug in in those areas. And then some were just through our internal control process, and because we knew of, I'll say, the tone at the top and management override, we looked at controls in a different way. Not just, you know, did somebody check the box as they should have, but we went in and kind of asked questions like, did you check the box? Where, you know, and we did a lot more fraud inquiries, we call them, so we went to employees, and I think because of what everybody was going through, employees were more open to admit if there was a mistake made or say yes, that we could improve our policy there, so some of that was there. So it was a combination of everything coming together, I think, that really changed the mindset of how employees saw the audit, and not as an inconvenience, but it was a, this is a helpful process and let's get everything cleaned up and move forward.
So, and you know, and if some of them are new things, then of course, that's no reflection on past audits, but I just, you know, I mean, some things were water under the bridge, but one of the questions that I get asked sometimes that I've never feel like I have an answer to is, how did the county get audits in the past that, that did not, you know, that were clean and did not identify any of these issues? And I just, you know, my answer is, that's a, that's a great question, and I wish I had a better answer to it.
Yeah, and just without really going into, looking at how they performed their audits, the details of how they performed it, we did review their work papers just to make sure that they did work to substantiate an audit, but we don't go into the details of like, what were their materiality thresholds down into that detail, and why didn't they notice some of the stuff that was going on? So it's hard for me to say, should they have caught it? That's not a, something I can easily answer without really going and digging and doing some investigating of our own. I just know when we came into it, we met with the audit committee and everything, we didn't know about some of the issues, so we did lower our scope, plus the fact that myself and the team that I had with me, Casey and Chris, we audit 100% governments, so we're more, we're very in tune with governments, how they operate, what we've seen in other governments. You know, there's things that happened here that obviously we're kind of making sure when we go to other clients now, like, we're looking at those controls in there, and they're like, why are you looking at the control? And we're like, well, we have, we know it happened in other places, could it happen here? And we don't want to see it happen there. So it's a great learning opportunity for everybody, including auditors. So just with us focusing on government, we may have had a different approach than others have had in the past. I can't say 100% that's true, but I just know our approach is really specific to governments.
Thank you.
This is Jasmine. Just a quick follow-up question?
Sure.
Yeah, could you elaborate on the finding related to board oversight a bit? I know there's more content in the management letter, but just provide a little more context around that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to say there is, obviously, there's been issues in the past in that we want to make sure that the board is being supplied with reports in a timely manner and that the deal is sufficient for you all to have the time to read, evaluate, and make the decision that you should be making and that you think is in the best interest of the county, and always doing a, we call it trust but verify in the audit world. So you get the numbers, you may question, have questions, rather than just getting a report, kind of giving a glance and rubber stamping it, we're saying like, the board should really be involved and really due diligently looking at any reports you get. And in order for you to do that, you need them to be reported to you on a timely basis. You know, if you're handed something right before you walk into a meeting, it doesn't always necessarily help you evaluate. Or if it does, say, can I ask questions later? It's kind of where we're getting at. So really getting that, that board oversight and just making sure that everybody's doing their due diligence that they were kind of elected to do.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from Joe or Amanda? Anybody else on the phone have a question or comment?
No, I'm good.
I'm good as well.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, any other questions? Great. Well, Bill, thank you very much for the information. We appreciate it very much. And anything else you want to share with us while we got you here today?
No, I just want to, again, say, say thank you to the county for having us as the auditors. And in addition, the finance staff, the internal staff, I mean, they did a tremendous job of pulling together the numbers with, left with, kind of the pieces that crumbled, that they were left with, and getting up to speed, and I think it's still a learning curve that they're going to be going through, but we're just happy, I think they're happy that we finally got an audit opinion, and I think we all are sharing that, you know, and obviously working towards issuing faster in the, in the future. But I think one thing I will commend you all on, especially the audit committee and some of those members, and finance was, sometimes people worry more about speed and hitting a target deadline, and we had those discussions throughout the process, and it was, everybody was on the same page of, while we want to get it done and we want to be able to move on and put things in the past, we want to make sure that it's done accurately. We had enough time to do our audit procedures when they gave us reports and all that, so those discussions were fluid throughout the whole audit, and we welcome that everybody saw the approach of that quality, you know, sometimes has to come before speed.
saw the approach of that quality, you know, sometimes has to come before speed. So.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that you, this came from the committee, so you can accept the report, not just hear it, but you do need to take a vote to accept the report coming from committee.
Understood, understood. All right. And Don, anything else you would add before we move on?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, all right. And Avril, any other observations you would share?
Also in committee this morning, we talked about the increased time it took to the audit. So if you would mind, you want to go ahead and approve the time it took, because we did have a resolution, an extension from the LGC that ended on March. They told us we have until April, so the board this morning took the action to extend that time to May 31st, so if you want to ratify that as well. And also, there's an increased cost because it took that much longer. We do have the funds that we can go ahead and pay for that invoice, but just want the board in full disclosure to understand it did cost more to finish the audit.
All right. Okay, so we need a motion to accept the audit.
I still move.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in second to accept the audit. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think this has been a good thorough audit. I think they've done a great job. But there's one thing that you haven't done. I think you need to look at what has been presented and find out just how many hours that has gone in over and above what normally has, and this should be brought back to the indicters and indictment against these employees to recoup that money, not just recoup what you have already recouped, but these hours that we've heard put in, that's a tremendous amount of money if you look at the scale. And I don't think it needs to be overlooked, I think it needs to be included into the recouping of your money, or the taxpayers' money, not your money. I think that's probably one of the biggest things I saw in this audit committee today is 2,700 hours, that's a lot. That's a lot of money. And I think they've done a good job. Anyway, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Jerry. All right, anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to accept the audit, but we, should we also include, Avril, you were saying that we need to recognize that we've extended the time through May 31st?
Yes.
Okay. Could that be incorporated into the motion, recognizing that it's extended through May 31st? Okay. And do we need to say the 31st since it's now being accepted today, or just why pick the end of the month?
I think they did the 31st because the LGC had not given us a, at that point, they have now, so you can give it at any date, but just to be the same last, you can send it to 31st.
Okay, all right. Just to be consistent with the audit committee, we'll say the 31st. Is that okay with the people who made the motion? All right.
So I have a question. I had a hard time hearing a little bit on, on the, on the way in. I just want to make sure that, just want to hear a comment from either, either staff or county manager on what our thoughts are moving forward in, in preparing for the next audit, reviewing and learning from this audit, and what do we see as, as next steps? And, you know, and the cost, I mean, I'm, I'm not really surprised, you know, by the cost, it's pretty extensive, it's a lot, was a lot, a lot of time, but, you know, what are we doing to look at that next time? But mainly just the follow-up on, on what we're going to do going forward.
Sure. We have drafted a corrective action plan to deal with the findings from this audit. Some of those are one-time issues, a lot of those have been taken or are being addressed through Workday, so they're already fixed. Other ones, we are working with other departments to figure out schedules for reconciliations and that sort of thing. So those issues will all be taken care of. As we move into the next audit cycle, we will have a planning session with Bill, Casey, Terry, Autumn, and I. And we will sit down, we will discuss what are going to be the items that are going to be prepared by the client, the PBCs, and we'll figure out the timing and all those sort of things so that we can meet, you know, the actual deadline, which is October 31st. And we will do what we need to do to get it done this time.
So do you think it's safe to say that Workday is, is putting the safety nets, you know, in place to catch, you know, what might be a?
You know, your system's only as good as, as you set it up to be.
Right.
Right now, we are, you know, every day, we're, we're doing things, and we're like, well, maybe they should be, have a different approval or an additional approval. So we're still going through some of that and tweaking it, but it's a very good system to handle our workflows, to make sure that we're getting sign-offs on invoices and expense reports and time cards and all those sorts of things. Those are in place, and those are working really well. If we come across an issue, we'll fix it. But for now, I think Workday's doing a really good job, but no system is going to be 100% perfect. No system is going to catch everything. I mean, if somebody really wants to do something, they'll try, and, you know, we'll just do our best to put up roadblocks to stop them from doing it.
So I think this will be my, my last comment. And the next, like, the next quarterly update that, that we have from, from Don, or maybe we could, maybe you kind of share with, not necessarily, you know, everything, but maybe just some of the 30,000-foot view on some of the things that you're seeing and that's being corrected and, you know, what makes sense moving forward.
Yeah, you actually have the corrective correction, corrective action plan in your CAFR, so all that information's already in there.
Good.
I mean, that is what we are going through. Sorry.
And we can give you an update too, how we're coming on that action plan, but everything has been.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. Action plan's cool, you know, I appreciate that, and, and it doesn't surprise me that y'all would do that and do a good job of, but I'd just like to hear that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go through every single finding with you at a work session or meeting or whatever you want to do. Just let me know.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
All right. Any other comments before we vote on the motion? All right. All of the motions, please. I'm sorry. Mr. Frye.
I want to thank our staff, because it's not been a very, I want to thank the staff because it hasn't been a very easy thing for them to go through, the audit, the whole audit committee, putting it together, the people that came in and did this audit and had to take all this extra time. And I have to say one thing, and Jerry said just a minute ago, that it's not the county taxpayer that should be paying this, the bill. It is the people that cost the bill. And, you know, if we can figure out a way to recoup some of the money to go back into the audits, plus our staff, look at the time that they've spent on all of this because of what we went through far as legalities with three different people in federal court and the whole package. It's a cleanup, and y'all have had a hard time doing it. But thank you for what y'all have done, and that's the one thing that I can say, you know. I was on audit committee originally, but understand some stuff about it, but don't have a whole lot to say, but, you know. Avril is, she stepped into, well, she's number four for me since I've been here, so she stepped into something not too long ago that has not been too good so far, and she's got a ways to go to, to, to try to make it work for all of us. So I thank all of you for doing what you're trying to do. That's the main thing. You know, are we all going to be perfect? Is the new audit committee going to be perfect? Probably not. And you're right, there will be things that slide through, and, you know, and if somebody figures out how to do it, they will do it. So, but thank y'all for trying. Thanks.
Sure. And I also would just like to thank the, the audit committee members and the, all the folks who worked on preparing the audit. You know, it's, it's, it's not like we want to see that there are different issues that need to be worked on, but we know that there are. So the whole purpose, I think, that we see in the audit is to identify those and to make sure we have a good approach to, to addressing them. So I think that's what, that's what this is all about. So thanks for everyone who worked on it. And if there's no other comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right.